Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order. And I'm going to invite the folks from Troop 240 and PAC 100 to come to the front of the room. The Scouts are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. So, gentlemen, if you would come to the front, please. Thank you.
[inaudible 00:00:48] [inaudible 00:00:50] One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You can be seated. So, for the audience, we have the Scouts with us tonight. Some of them are going to be working on citizenship badges, so they'll be here for a portion of our meeting. And I just thought it would be a great opportunity for them to lead us in the pledge. So, thank you, gentlemen, for doing that. Thank you to troop leaders and parents and other supporters of the Boy Scouts. We appreciate that. We have -- A roll call, please.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Miller.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Dickerson.
Present.
Alderman Reese.
Present.
Alderman Davidson.
Absent.
Alderman Bachman.
Absent.
Mayor Bowman. Present. Thank you. We do have a forum. We do have ceremonial matters on our agenda, but I didn't see a copy of the proclamation. Do you have that? Did you want me to read that?
Not until next one.
Okay. Thank you. We'll take ceremonial matters off now. Moving on to public participation, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the Board of Aldermen this evening? If so, please move forward to the microphone. If you'd state your name and address for the record, please, into the microphone. Into the microphone, please.
Bonnie Andrew. Five, zero, six, Hamlet Drive, Harrisonville. I'm here to discuss your wanting to increase our taxes. It's a real shame we have so many senior citizens in this community. And they have to choose whether they eat or they pay a bill. And we made it the last mayor, and there's no reason why we can't make it again without tax increases on our water and our electric. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Good evening.
So, my name is Paul Minchin, three, zero, zero, nine, Canyon Drive in Harrisonville. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Aldermen for allowing me this opportunity to address you this evening. Most of you I do know. But for those of you who don't know, I'm Paul Minchin. I'm the superintendent of the Harrisonville R-9 School District. I speak this evening on behalf of the 2,300-plus students, the 300-plus employees, and Harrisonville R-9 Board of Education. I appreciate the friendships and collaboration with many of the members of the Board of Aldermen as we attempt to improve the school and our community. Many of you graduated from our fine institution. Most of you have had children or grandchildren attend as well, so we even have relatives that we employ. We enthusiastically encourage this board to favorably continue down the path of adding an economic development coordinator. For the past several months, a member of the Chamber of Commerce has gathered representatives of the community together in effort to promote economic development. The mayor herself has started the Mayor's Advisory Council with prominent members of the business community to gather input on this very topic and others. I believe the various groups working together will move us forward where we need to be, but an expert in the specific area of growth with a growth mindset is what is needed at this time. It's because of the relationships that I've been able to form in the short time that I've been here that I was taken back by some recent comments that were attributed to a member of the Board of Aldermen in the South Cass Tribune, where it was stated that the school is believed to be blamed for the lack of growth in the community. While we do acknowledge continuous improvement is necessary in all facets of community life for it to grow and thrive, simply blaming one particular entity for the lack of growth is shortsighted and irresponsible of a publicly elected official in a public meeting. Comments such as this are divisive and insult the wonderful staff and students that I'm more than proud to represent. As we come together to develop our community, I ask that we look forward together and stop pointing fingers. The school, with help of the community, is currently engaged in a strategic planning process that we think will benefit the students and staff of our community as well as the community itself. And many of you are -- were glad to have a part in that process. In turn, I'd ask that you please consider adding an expert in the field of economic development to supplement the efforts of those already made to improve our city. I'm a member of the community, so thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Minchin. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the board this evening? Please make your way to the microphone, Mr. Pab.
My name is Earl Pab. I live at sixteen oh seven, North Lexington, on the wrong side of the tracks they tell me. First of all, I'd like to know what the charge is on the sewer and water. Can anybody tell me?
Staff?
Not off the top of my head. I couldn't tell you what the connection fee is.
Well, I was told that that's why I'm asking. I was told $4,000 down here.
Absolutely not. Incorrect.
Okay. That's why I was -- before I said anything on that. Because I don't know what's true and what's not. But I do am hard about the water and electrical and sewer rates that you're wanting to put in. You're overdoing it. I can understand it going up a little, but I cannot understand the rate that you're wanting to go up. Cannot. You've got to have some control of why this is. You've got to prove to me it's different than what it is. Plus the fact, I still wonder where the money from the audit that nobody came up with, the state audit that is in here. Where's that money? That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Pab. We'll have staff follow up with you for an explanation about the sewer rates. You'll make yourself a note, Mr. Patterson, please. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the board this evening? Please make your way to the microphone. Seeing no one, I'll close public participation at this time. We'll move on to our agenda items. I'd like to ask you at this time to please silence your cell phones so there's no interaction. So, begin with the approval of the minutes. First of all, we have the minutes of the executive session, November 4th, 2019. Looking for motion. I have a motion from Alderman Reese with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. All in favor of approving those minutes of the executive session, November 4th. Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved. The minutes of the executive session, November 5th, 2019.
Move to approve.
Thank you. I have a motion from Alderman Turner and a second from Alderman Miller. All in favor of approving those minutes? Anyone opposed? Thank you. The minutes of the executive session, November 5th, stand approved. The minutes of the Board of Aldermen work session, November 4th, 2019. It's a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Turner. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. The minutes of the Board of Aldermen work session, November 4th, stand approved. The minutes of the Board of Aldermen regular meeting, November 4th.
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson with a second from Alderman Miller. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. The minutes of the Board of Aldermen regular meeting, November 4th, stand approved.
Move to approve.
And the Board of Aldermen meeting, special meeting, November 5th.
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson with a second from Alderman Reese. All in favor? Anyone opposed? The Board of Aldermen special meeting minutes stand approved. Moving on to the agenda items, Council of 75.
A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri to authorize the city administrator to execute a purchase agreement for the 2019 airport roof repairs from HD roof coatings in the amount of $16,940 and establishing effective date.
Mr. Patterson.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Some of you might recall, this has been actually in the budget the last two years, and it's come in over budget each time. We put this out to bid. We did change it just a little bit. And as you can see, we got a bid just under $17,000, and we have $30,000 in the budget. This is not a roof replacement. It is a repair. And it's basically, it's a liquid polymer coating. When it dries, it almost feels like rubber. It should be a fairly good price. We may have a small change order here or there depending on what the skylight issues turn out to be once they get up there. But I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Is this on the main hangar?
This is the main hangar building. We're likely to keep that on the counter.
Anyone else? Any other questions?
I mean, wish him to approve, Council of 75.
I have a motion from Alderman Turner and a second from Alderman Dickerson to approve Council of 75. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. Council of 75 becomes resolution 046. Council of 72.
An ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the City of Harrisonville as follows. Chapter 700, Section 70530, by establishing new rates for municipal electric services.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone till the next, the December 2nd meeting for further discussion.
Oh, it's seconded.
Okay. I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Reese to postpone any action on Council of 72. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. I'd like to have a show of hands then. All in favor of tabling, Council of 72, raise your hands. All opposed to tabling? Three. Tied vote. The mayor has the opportunity to break the tie, so I will postpone the reading of Council of 72 to December 2nd meeting. Council of 73.
An ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the City of Harrisonville as follows. Chapter 700, Section 70460, by establishing new rates for municipal sewer services.
I'd make a motion to postpone this to the December 2nd. Therefore, discussions on.
Okay.
I have a motion to table Council of 73 from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman
Reese to postpone any action on Council of 73 until our December 2nd meeting. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. We'll have a show of hands again. All in favor of tabling, Council of 73, to our December 2nd meeting? Please raise your hand. And those opposed, please raise your hand. Okay, so it's a tie vote again. The mayor has the opportunity to break the tie vote. I will vote to postpone any action on Council of 73 until our December 2nd meeting. Moving on to Council of 74.
Fiscal year 2020 budget and ordinance adopting an operating budget for the City of Harrisonville, Missouri for the fiscal year January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020.
Thank you.
I call the question.
Okay.
Are we going to vote on that?
There's not been a motion yet.
I make a motion that we table until December 2nd.
You'd have to read it before we make the motion, Mr. Al.
It's been read. He read it. So, we have a motion to, by Alderman Dorhoff, to table the reading of Council of 74 to December's, I'm sorry, Alderman Miller, to table it till December 2nd. And a second from Alderman Dorhoff.
We also have, back to Mr. Turner, called question. How does that come into play?
Did he need a second for that? He needed that.
I gave it.
And you seconded it.
Yep.
Was there, but how, I can't tell you the word on the precedents things. That lies. But I'm calling for the question versus motion to table.
As I said here, I can't say.
But the right procedure is.
If the ordinance is read twice, it asks me to vote it, correct? How does you table it?
That's correct. It needs to be read twice.
Okay. So, you read, you just read it twice.
You had the second reading.
This was the second reading. And then they call the question, ends debate, and you vote immediately. So, I mean, that's up to the attorney. It's right around.
That's correct. If this was the second reading, then it's been read twice.
This is an unusual situation for us. We've never been faced with this before.
A previous question has to be unanimous.
What's the issue?
A previous question has to be unanimous. Anyone objects to a previous question, automatically defeats it.
Not a previous question.
No. With parliamentary procedure, a previous question has to be unanimous.
It's a two-thirds. Yeah. The attorney.
Ready?
Got a second. Two-thirds vote to pass.
Do you have a copy, Ma?
Randy, do you have a copy of proper rules of procedure in your office?
Right now, we should be going on the call to question. If that doesn't pass, then we go back to debate and then we vote on the motion or the ordinance. This vote right now, we shouldn't be having this just only call the question, not on a.
Okay. We're conferring with our legal attorneys, so we'll come back with an answer here momentarily.
Actually, you are right. It takes two-thirds to approve a previous question. And it does require a second.
I got a second.
Mr. Mauer is out ill this evening. That's why we don't have him with us.
So.
What'd you find, Mr. Mauer?
So, the, this is from proper rules of order, newly revised 11 edition, and it's calling for the question, which is simply a motion for the previous question. It's a different form of calling for that question to be brought up and dealt with immediately. The chairman asked if there are objections to closing the debate. Calling for the question means you want to have a vote now rather than continue discussion. Is why I'm understanding what you're saying here. The chairman asked if there's objection to closing debate. If a member or member, members object or try to get to the floor, he would ask if there's a second question, a second to the motion to call, which there was. And then we would take a vote on whether to order the previous question, whether to close debate and go to the vote. That requires a second, and it requires a two-thirds vote to close the debate. So, that should be where we're at today. Does that sound right?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Calling for the question or moving the previous question is a motion to close debate. And if that's not unanimous, then you have a vote on that question. It requires a two-thirds vote. It requires a second, and then a two-thirds vote to close the debate.
That sounds right. I spoke to Steve Mauer, the attorney. He said that there needs to be a motion to end debate and then a second to the motion to end debate, which I heard a motion to table and then a second. I heard a call to question and then a second to call to question. The call to question itself does not end the debate. It needs to be a motion to end debate, which I didn't hear. I don't.
I believe that was probably your understanding of what you were saying, though, right? It was a motion to end debate. And you called the question. I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page. And either way, then it would require a vote on that motion to end debate.
I need to take a look at that, but if that's what that says, and that's correct. Steve Mauer mentioned that the first properly made motion and the second is the one that controls.
The motion to call the question came prior to the motion to table, so that one should be dealt with first. If you want to clarify by asking and rephrase it as a motion to close debate, does that satisfy everybody? Don't matter. It's still on there.
I think it does matter.
Well, it's that, but it's.
I will understand what your intent is, but I think we'll probably have to restate it correctly, so. So, would you share that in the microphone?
Sure. As I'm reading this right now, the call for question may motivate unanimous consent to end the debate. My understanding is if there's not unanimous consent to end the debate, the debate is not ended.
So, make your motion then to end the debate, Alderman, instead of calling for the question.
Make a motion to end the debate.
Would you use your microphone?
I make a motion to end the debate. Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Miller to end the debate. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. We'll show a hand again. All in favor of ending the debate? Raise your hands. And all opposed? Raise your hands. So, it's another tie. So, I would be, I'm assuming you can break the tie?
Correct.
So, the motion to end the debate fails. So, now we'll take the motion to table.
I'd like to make a motion to table to the December 2nd meeting for further discussion.
So, I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Dorhoff to table any action on Council of 74 until our December 2nd meeting. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. We'll have a show of hands again. All in favor of tabling, Council of 74, to our December 2nd meeting? Raise your hand. Any opposed? Raise your hand. Okay, so it's a three-three vote. And I will vote to table any action on Council of 74 to our December 2nd meeting. And I'll add these comments. There has been further discussion among members of the board about needing some clarification on these three ordinances. And so, City Manager Tholen was gracious enough to schedule a meeting for us to come together and talk about it further and answer additional questions. We were going to have that meeting on the 25th of November. I still would like to see some opportunity to get your answers to your questions so that we could have consensus and get these ordinances passed. Moving on to Alderman and committee reports. Alderman Dorhoff. Alderman Milner. Alderman Reese.
Well, I do. Mine is strictly a heads-up because something nice is coming up, and I'm going to pass it on to Alderman Miller.
Alderman Miller?
Well, I'm going to do the same thing, if I may, Mayor. I would like to quickly stop on my report and give the floor to Mr. Chris Deal.
This is football tonight going right over here.
Mr. Deal, would you step to the microphone?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, I'm very pleased with the opportunity because the board knows, and for many people in the audience, we have established a dog park committee for a dog park project, and it was approved by the park board. And the committee started out with $2,000 in seed money from the Park Foundation, which is raised secretly from park operations, and then also designated the money to go from the golf tournament this year towards the dog park. So, there was $6,000. On top of that, we have a major donation. Our goal is right around $75,000, but it may be less than that because of this particular donation. But Mr. Bill Mills of the Family Center Farm and Home has made a pledge of $25,000 to cover the fence for the dog park. So, we are very excited about that, very appreciative of that, and so that brings our total currently to $34,000 that has been raised for the dog park. So, this community continues to amaze me and me in here in Parks and Recreation regards to the support it is and sponsorships, the kids and sponsorships to the many different programs we have. So, very, very happy to report that. We will continue to meet as a committee, our meeting this Thursday, to further discuss, excuse me, to further discuss what we're doing with the next phase. to further discuss, excuse me, to further discuss what we're doing with the next phase of our planning. But we are well on our way. Thank you very much for the support of this board and this opportunity. Thank you.
That is great news.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to continue as well. Attending park board meeting last week. Staff still working on some transition administrative functions. We're still working on the perri grass project at North Lexington and Abbey Street for the city park. Chris just talked about the golf park committee. We've got great news there. October was a busy month with special events, Love Cabin Festival, pumpkin painting, trunk and tree, and Chris's favorite, the Honda Hay Rides in the park. We've got 500-plus in attendance, so that went extremely well. Also was brought to our attention about a study that was done in February of 2010 about our two dams in the city park. This is something Chris Deal has continued to speak with city engineering corps engineers. We know that our dam, both dams, are in serious deterioration mode. Something we need to bring back in front of the Board of Aldermen and the public that we need to start looking at a plan here to replace both of those dams because we've got a serious problem. And luckily, we got through 2019 without a serious issue. So this was a completed study, February 4, 2010. An engineering study. The biggest thing that came out of this was the estimated cost at that time was $6,523,561. Obviously, 19 years later, that, that figure's going to be much higher. But it's something that we've got to start having discussions about and trying to figure out a plan to set up Harrisonville and get these, get these dams replaced before we have a true issue. Also, I just want to go on record stating that after our last meeting two weeks ago, I spoke at great length with Mr. Tholen and with Alderman Davidson and Eric Patterson a few days later about these rate increases in the budget. And that is why we're having that meeting next Monday night on the 25th. I want facts and figures to understand exactly where we are. And until we have facts and figures that I'm happy with or feel confident with, that they are accurate, it's going to be a no vote for me. I want justification for what we need to do. And I've made it clear before and I'll say it right here. I am not in favor of an economic developer, and that's in the 2020 budget. Thank you.
Alderman Dickerson?
Well, I agree with Clint about the dams, this town.
Excuse me, just a second. I would prefer that decorum would be that we address each other by Alderman or mister and not by our first names.
Alderman Milner.
Thank you.
The dams have been neglected in this town for a long, long time, too long. And they've been on every mayor's agenda to repair and every board for the 12 years I've been in office. And I'm a great supporter of those, and I'd like to see us do something with them. I don't know the availability of money. The last time that our previous administrator talked, he was trying to get the corps of engineers to help us repair them. But I think that they probably aren't going to happen. And if it is, it may be too late for the dam. I don't know. They move very slowly. So I'd be really in support of us doing something at those places.
Thank you. Alderman Turner?
Yeah, the last planning zoning meeting, we had a public hearing for a specialty permit for agriculture farm to raise fish for some high-end restaurants and stuff, and also indoor hydroponic farms for vegetables and herbs. That's also sold to top in restaurants and whatnot, so. It sounds like a really neat process and be really good to learn about and maybe to... And then that's it for that. And then as far as the last council ball that we tabled, that's our budget, which by ordinance, we said we would have it passed by the end of this month. Now we're not moving to next month. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Tholen.
Couple of reminders. Some of the Aldermen have already referenced the workshop on the 25th. That's at 6 o'clock here. A reminder that most city functions will be closed in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday on the next Thursday and Friday from now. I too would like to echo the good news about the announcement from the Family Center from Mr. Mills and his family. That's a, that's a great donation and for a good cause. And so we're lucky to have a community that supports those kind of things like that. So congratulations to those again. We also had a little good news today. We had, I guess, an appearance on Channel 41 with regard to kind of an initiative that our fire department has had in some of our schools and hopefully continues to do some more of the schools as they have resources to do it as a, as a kind of a small gesture that we can do. It's another safety issue. It's utilizing used fire hose that we can't have it serviced anymore. And being able to kind of retrofit that as on door closers, on commercial doors that have the overhead closer with the elbows on it that swings shut, you can slide a piece of that hose over that to prohibit it from opening up. That's something that we can do to help in our school facilities. And I think that was a great thing for the department to do. And then somehow got word of it out from the public. And so it's nice to see that kind of positive coverage of, of things in our community. So I want to thank you for that.
I have a few comments I'd like to make. I regret that there is not consensus on the board regarding some of the ordinances that were on the agenda tonight. And I'm hoping that we can move closer toward consensus after our Monday, November 25 meeting. I do want to perhaps go back. There is a resolution on the wall behind you there, Alderman, from our May retreat when we talked about the priorities for this board for the next year. One of those priorities that we had was the hiring of an economic development director. And at the retreat, there was great discussion between staff and the Board of Aldermen about the need to move our city forward. And I think most of you that have been out in the community have heard from the citizens. They want to know why everything is happening around Harrisonville, but nothing is happening here. And why growth and jobs and homes are, are going on in Raymore, Belton, Peculiar, and Pleasant Hill, but not in Harrisonville. I think it points out the need for the fact that we do need to have someone who is promoting our city, specifically Harrisonville. But the confusion seems to be that members of the board feel that the economic development director's sole job is to bring new business into the city. I want to point out to the board that the economic development professional does other things related to business. It is the economic development professional's role to retain existing business that is in the city. It is the role of that position to promote entrepreneurship in our city. When we talk about the fact that our dam needs repair and we need money to repair it, that's kind of a... I'm not sure I can calculate that in my mind when you want to vote against increasing things to generate the money to pay for things that you agree that we need. But I would just ask you to remember your commitment to our citizens, that you want to increase their quality of life. And oftentimes, those things require face-to-face marketing, somebody promoting our city, promoting the fact that Harrisonville has assets that other cities in Cass County don't have. And one of those is an excellent school system. And economic development provides taxes for our schools, provides taxes for our city and other entities, but provides taxes for our schools. And I've got ADS. We talked about ADS the other week. The fact that had it not been for an economic development professional, we would not have ADS in our community. In 2018, ADS paid the school district $29,462.52 in real estate taxes and personal property taxes, $63,823.96. That's revenue, Mr. Minchin, that your school district would not have had it not been for new business in our community. So when you think about those things, when we say we're opposed to economic development director, when you think about what new business brings into our city? We talk about electric rates and sewer rates and not wanting to increase those? The answer to that is to bring business to town, to bring consumers of our electric and of our water and of our sewer. So I would just ask the board to do your homework. Don't just make an opinion based on emotion, but do the research. See what economic development really is about. Questions from the media? Was that a no? Was that nothing?
That, that, that was a, well, actually, I've got so many questions that I don't even want to start.
All right, so it's a no. All right, I'd like to remind the board that we'll reconvene here on Thursday evening for interviews for city administrator, Thursday and Friday. Those interviews begin at 6 o'clock. And city clerk has been kind enough to provide food for us before we begin. So we'll see you all here on Thursday at 5:30. I have a motion to adjourn, please.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson with a second from Alderman Milner to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned.